I would like to call the meeting to order at 10:03. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Bruno?
The United States, Mary. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the roll call.
Mr. Conover?
Here.
Mr. Leggett?
Here.
Mr. Diamond? Mr. McDebit?
Here.
Ms. Bremer?
Here.
Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Driscoll?
Here.
Mrs. Frazier?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Hogan?
Here.
Mr. Dickinson?
Here.
Mr. Merlino?
Here.
Mr. Stroud?
Here.
Mr. Wild?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Schaeffler?
Here.
Mr. Garrity?
Here.
Chairwoman Seaver?
President.
Former established.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December 18th Board meeting and from the January 8th organizational meeting? That motion is made by Supervisor McGowan, seconded by Supervisor Bremer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you Supervisor Smith, I appreciate that. One last motion. At this point in time, when our federal and state elected leaders join us, I'll defer the floor over to them. They have an incredibly busy schedule today. So out of consideration for their schedule and also the busy schedule we have in front of us, I would ask that you please hold your questions. We will hear from them, a quick update, and of course, would encourage you to reach out to them individually in the coming days as well. Congresswoman Stefanic, thank you for joining us this morning. The floor is yours.
Thank you Congresswoman Seaver, and thank you to all of the members of the Board in Warren County. I am currently driving back from Washington DC to the district for district events this weekend, so that's the background noise and background view here today. I wanted to make a couple of statements first on the very horrific events that occurred last week at the United States Capitol. So first, I want to make very clear that I condemn the violence and the destruction that occurred at the United States Capitol. I was on the House floor. It was an incredibly scary moment for the entire American people. Their actions were un-American. Americans, of course, have the right constitutionally to peacefully protest. They do not have the right to commit violence and destruction of federal property. And we are working with law enforcement to ensure that they are prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. I also want to thank our US Capitol Police for their tremendous service and courage. We lost one Capitol Police officer in the line of duty during the events and another police officer subsequent who was lost in the line of duty. We are committed to working with our law enforcement to ensure that they have the resources we need. As we are headed towards the inaugural for President-elect Biden, our focus is making sure that we have a safe and secure inauguration and then get back to the people's work. I also wanted to provide an update on the COVID relief package and resources that will be received by the residents, small businesses, and other important federal funds going to the North Country and across the congressional district. So in December, after many, many months, we finally broke through the gridlock and passed the COVID relief package. And there were a number of provisions that are going to be really important for our community. So number one, for our school districts, there's $4 billion of elementary and secondary school relief fund. And that will go to local school districts. It has to go to the school districts by law by January 2022. So there's one year for those funds to be allocated across the district. In addition, there is federal support for independent schools, so the non-public schools in the district as well. They have also struggled. For New York State DOT infrastructure projects, there was $400 million included in the legislation. Warren County has benefited from previous rounds of infrastructure funding, and we're going to make sure that much of those funds come to the district. Higher education, obviously, the importance of SUNY Adirondack is critical. I just announced yesterday over $45 million to our higher ed institutions. SUNY Adirondack is receiving 4.8 million. We are working with President Duffy and in close communication with her team. In addition, there's support for childcare through the Community Block Development Grant Program. And then additional funds for broadband. This is on top of the announcement I made in December for the nearly $100 million that New York is going to receive through the Rural Broadband Fund that we were not initially eligible for. And I worked for the FCC to make us eligible. I've spoken with many of the town supervisors in Warren County about specific localities and neighborhoods and locations where that build-out process will begin. So with that, Rachel, we have a lot of work ahead of us. I will turn it back over to you. Thanks for the opportunity to give an update.
Thank you Congresswoman Stefanic, and we certainly appreciate your efforts and advocacy on our behalf. At this time, I'd like to welcome Assemblyman Matt Simpson. It's nice to see you back, Matt, and the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, and I want to congratulate you Chairwoman Seaver on, you know, being the Chairwoman of the Board for 2021. And I want to congratulate all of you in the new year. And, you know, I'm missing with COVID. I'm not seeing you all as much as I have in the past, but I can assure you, we've been in our office working diligently in response to the many calls around COVID. One of the issues that is really behind most of these calls is the confusion around how to, you know, secure an appointment for a vaccination, or where do you go and how do you call? And right now, I'm going to give you a number because this is the main state number to call for appointments and vaccinations. It's 1-833-697-4829. I was on a call yesterday with the Governor's Office. It's, you know, there's limited vaccines right now, and there's about 7 million people in this first phase that are eligible. But I think that we need to look at how we can communicate to this group of people. A lot of these seniors are having difficulty managing the information as it's coming through on social media, it's coming through on the, you know, Facebook. And we really need to do a better job. Somehow, we need to communicate more effectively with these seniors because they just, you know, we deal with computers all day, we deal with press releases, we deal with this information. We have to disseminate this better to our constituents. So that's what we're working on. Those are probably 99% of the calls, and it really concerns me, you know, thinking that people are just confused about where to go, how to call, who to talk to, and when they're going to receive these vaccinations. I have, we've had session this past week, two days. I had committees. I am the ranker of the Social Services Committee. So I'm very excited about that appointment. I'm also on the Environmental Conservation Committee, the Local Governments Committee, and also the Tourism, Arts, and Sports Development Committee. So I'm very busy. We are. I encourage you all to come and visit my office and meet my staff, and please reach out to me. You know, I was very encouraged about the, I just got a message on the phone number. I'll do that after I'm done here. I was very encouraged about the Governor mentioning broadband. That is something that's just so critically important, you know, especially with this COVID response. These seniors, not everybody in the North Country in this district, has access to these social media posts or the way that this information is being disseminated. So I'm very happy for Congresswoman Stefanic's work on that, and I'm looking forward to working more and helping make this a reality in the North Country. I'm looking at my notes. So the number that I had said, it's 1-833-697-4829. And with that, I've got to head over to another meeting, but I wish you all well, and please stay in touch if there's anything that I can do. Any of your constituents in your towns have any questions, you know, surrounding COVID or any other issue, please reach out to me. My staff and myself, we're working to deal with those, every single one of those issues. And I'm very proud so far of how we're managing that. So thank you.
Thank you Assemblyman Simpson, and we appreciate your advocacy at the state level on our behalf as well. Please bear with me this morning. We change, new changes in our agenda. Our first, just moving things around, our first item that we will be doing this morning will come from our County Administrator, Ryan Moore, with a presentation from our newly-appointed Personnel Chair, Claudia Bremer.
Thank you Madam Chair. I'm very proud to announce the January 2021 Employee of the Month. And our Employee of the Month this month is Assistant Director of Public Health, Pat Delton, and she was nominated by our 2020 Employee of the Year, Public Health Director Janelle Jones. I'd like to read first from the nomination that Janelle has written. "It is with pleasure that I nominate Pat Delton, Assistant Director of Public Health, as Employee of the Month. During these unprecedented times, Pat has gone above and beyond each and every day to meet the needs of the residents of Warren County. She has worked tirelessly with state, regional, and local stakeholders on Warren County's response. From early on in the COVID-19 pandemic, the mindset has been, 'We stay until the work is done,' which means working from the early morning hours until well in the evening to ensure that we, as a county, are on top of all the aspects of the COVID-19 response. And we are very grateful for her effort. Whether it was putting in place the local contact tracing team, establishing COVID-19 testing, public education, and most recently vaccine administration, we are fortunate to have Pat among us leading the charge. Pat has been with the agency since 1990, and she has demonstrated passion, dedication, leadership, and professionalism throughout her time with us. Her knowledge, experience, and efforts have contributed to the success of Warren County's response to this pandemic. She has been and continues to be an inspiration for staff, leading them through each and every day. And both Pat and Janelle are also an inspiration to me and to all our other department heads and employees and everybody in the community that has collectively responded so well to this pandemic. You two are irreplaceable. You've been at the core and at the heart of everything that we've done, and there are never enough words to thank you for all of that. So congratulations, it is very well deserved."
We're going to do a photo. Let Don get in here. Well, Don's coming around. I just want to reiterate our thanks to you for all of your work, Pat, and also for you, Janelle, Director and Assistant Director. This has been an amazing year. You guys have stepped up so much, and Warren County is a highlight of all the counties in our area, and we really appreciate your tireless, ongoing work, and that of your staff and all of the volunteers that you have brought into the fold as well, dozens of them. Thank you so much. Great job.
Thank you very much.
And keep up the good work. You're welcome.
At this time, I have no doubt that you will stay standing for just a little bit longer as I ask for a standing ovation and applause and extreme gratitude for Frank Thomas, who was our previous Chair of the Board and is our current Budget Officer for 2021. Please join me in thanking him. Supervisor Thomas, we are not done yet. I am positive that they are not up to par to go fishing with you, but I was going to get you one, and I thought, how much fun would that be alone? So I hope you take me fishing. At this time, I'm incredibly proud of the members of our Board. We've had a change in leadership, but more importantly, we have come together unified. And I've heard today from our Majority Leader, our Minority Leader, and from Craig Leggett, the Supervisor from the Town of Chester, who represents our independent and our unaffiliated political voters or electorates. And we have all come together in agreement that we would like to submit a letter on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to our community and to our elected leaders. Supervisor Leggett, is that correct? Thank you. Minority Leader, Ms. Bremer?
That is my understanding as well. Thank you Chairwoman.
Thank you. And Majority Leader, Supervisor Beatty?
That's spot on. That's correct. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank the Board, and on behalf of the Board, I will now read the letter into the record. "The Warren County Board of Supervisors condemns all acts of violence. The Warren County Board of Supervisors condemns all the violent and destructive acts done by the people, particularly those acts that have been perpetrated by those that do not seek peaceful protest, and those that have contributed to the violence and destruction in 2020 and 2021, including those acts that attacked the Capitol of the United States of America on Wednesday, January 6, 2021. This implores all judicial and law enforcement agencies to administer swift and sure justice upon all who broke the law and behalf of all victims who suffered from the acts of violence that occurred on that day and all of those days before us. And the Warren County Board of Supervisors acknowledges that President-elect Joseph Biden and Kamala Harris are elected, and that the 2020 national presidential election, as determined by the United States Electoral College and accepted by the US Congress, just as we have as Americans, as this great country acknowledged the election results in all previous elections. And we express support and gratitude to our Warren County Board of Elections, where we all serve the great county of Warren here at home. And the Warren County Board of Supervisors firmly desire to see a peaceful transition of power on January 20, 2021, and ask that all who have been elected by the people for the people support this desire with their words and actions in the same way that we are committed, each individual supervisor on this very Board, to respect, communicate, and are committed to the transition here before us today on January 15, 2021, in our hometown county, Warren County, USA. And the Warren County Board of Supervisors asks the Clerk of the Board to send this letter of support to Senator Schumer, Gillibrand, Congresswoman Stefanic, State Senator Stec, State Assemblyman Simpson, and to other persons or entities so desired by the Board, including but not limited to all elected supervisors and all elected regardless of political affiliation in the county of Warren in an effort to begin 2021 in unity and justice for all. Sincerely, the Warren County Board of Supervisors." At this time, I'd like to move forward to the State of the County address. And I'm also going to include our moment of reflection since I've gone all over on our agenda this morning. "If we could please take a moment as we come together to reflect and to believe in all of the possibilities and hope for the new year, keeping in mind who we work for and serve, the citizens of Warren County. Collectively, we represent a diverse population from our most northern friends and neighbors in North River to our vibrant and iconic city of Glens Falls, affectionately known as hometown USA. We represent not just one person and not just one political party. We represent all 65,000, and I believe it's 597 individuals in our community. Let us come together as a Board of Supervisors to serve all in our beautiful county. I stand before you as the newly-elected Chairwoman of the Board to deliver the State of the County address, and I would like to welcome those of you joining us virtually, members of our Board, our employees, and our invited guests. I would also like to especially welcome my family here today. Please welcome my husband Kevin Kinnon, my son Dylan, and my brother and sister-in-law Ken and Trudy Seaver. With all of my heart, I thank you, and your support and your patience does not go unnoticed. None of us could have imagined what 2020 would bring, let alone predict what will lie ahead of us for 2021. I doubt any one of us would have expected that we would be here wearing masks, staying socially distant, all of that would become normal for us. We would monitor testing and contact tracing, and depending on the results, schools and businesses alike would learn how to keep going virtually. From kindergartners to grandparents, we learned that Zoom isn't just a sound that a car makes, it is how we stay connected with each other. We have endured a lot this year, and we have learned how to thrive in our chaos. We have discovered how resilient we really are as a community, as a country, and as the Warren County Board of Supervisors. I would like to thank our county team. This team was led by Supervisor Frank Thomas, County Administrator Ryan Moore, and our incredible Clerk of the Board, Amanda Allen. And not last, not least but last, or not last but least, however the saying is.
Last but not least.
Last but not least, thank you. Don, our incredible Director of Public Affairs, you are a liaison to the media, and you continue to play an integral, you can continue to play one of the most important roles to show our citizens the most current information and to make safe decisions. Now beyond that administration, our departments have done an extraordinary job, and I cannot think of a department that has risen higher to this relentless challenge than our employees in public health under the very capable leadership of Janelle Jones. I know all of us are grateful for your tireless efforts to keep us safe and lead us to the day when we are all vaccinated. Thank you doesn't capture the full magnitude of our gratitude. All of our department heads have worked hard and were disciplined in migrating their options so that there are operations that we could continue their daily duty to our citizens without compromising our staff's health or public safety. Through this crisis, not one employee was laid off, and none of our offices stopped delivering on their responsibilities. I thank each and every person who works for this county. We know it can be hard, but please know how much you are valued. Now, amidst these challenges, you may expect that we would have terrible news financially, but that is just not the case. We have received 1.2% less in sales tax than the prior year, which is reflective of our New York state shutdown. However, our sales tax still generated a surplus of $271,576. This is a clear credit to our 2020 Board Chair Supervisor Thomas, Budget Officer Supervisor Garrity, and is very much attributed to our hard-working Treasurer, Mike Swan. With a change in the Chair and with Board leadership, I want to build on the good work, the good solid work of our Budget Officer from 2020 Supervisor Thomas, or from 2020, Supervisor Garrity and Supervisor Thomas. I am happy to report that he will join our newly-established bipartisip leadership team as our Budget Officer. I thank him for his leadership, his guidance, and his friendship. The 2021 committee assignments were disseminated to the Supervisors yesterday, and they are now available on our website. Each assignment was made with a goal of having balanced representation by region and party, and with a goal that we develop a cohesive approach that raises up every corner of our county. We are better when we work together, and when we raise each other up, we are Warren County strong. No one person will have all of the answers, and just as none of us could know what 2020 would bring, and we did not know that we were facing a pandemic, we do not know what 2021 will bring. But I can promise you this, I will make sure that every voice of every member of this Board is heard because each of you are important to our success. I promise to every citizen that you will be able to see our meetings on YouTube so you can see the issues that we are addressing, the options that we are discussing, and know that your voice can be heard. I have set up an email for your suggestions. Email any idea to WarrenCountyStrong@WarrenCountyNY.gov. And while we don't know what we will have to face, I don't have a doubt in my mind that together we can handle whatever this year brings, for we are Warren County strong. May God bless our county, our country, and her citizens. Thank you. At this point in time, I declare a public hearing is open for the Warren County Local Law Number Two of 2021. This is a local law amending Local Law Number Five of 2009. It is establishing the Office of Emergency Services for Warren County, and I request that the Clerk read the Notice of Public Hearing Allowed, privilege of the floor extended to anyone wishing to be heard on this matter.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren, New York, is considering the adoption of a proposed Local Law Number Two for the year 2021 entitled "A Local Law Amending Local Law Number Five of 2009 Establishing the Offices of Emergency Services for Warren County." Notice is further given that pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Board of Supervisors on December 18, 2020, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors on January 15, 2021 at 10:00 AM in the Supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center, Route 9, Queensborough, New York, at which time and place, all persons interested in the matter of such Local Law Number Two for the year 2021 will be heard concerning the same. Note, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which has caused the closure of the Warren County Municipal Center building to the public, this hearing will be held via Zoom video conference. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must contact the Clerk of the Board or to receive an invitation to the meeting. Comments can also be submitted by mail, in writing, or by email to 1340 State Route 9, Lake George, New York, 12845, or to allen@warrencountyny.gov, no later than January 14, 2021. Comments can also be made during the meeting through the chat feature of the livestream video offered on Warren County's YouTube page. A copy of said Local Law is available for inspection during regular business hours by contact and the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above-stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website. I have not received any comments or requests to be included in the gym for this.
Okay. Don Lehman is at, do you have anything in particular to this in the last few minutes on YouTube?
Good morning Chairwoman Seaver. No, there is nothing on YouTube right now related to this public hearing.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would call for a report from our County Administrator.
Thank you Madam Chair. I have a very brief report this morning, and that is to acknowledge the employee anniversaries for the month of January with 30 years' service in Warren County, Rebecca Hill from the Social Services Department, and with 20 years of service to Warren County, Wayne Farmer in the Sheriff's Department. We thank them both for their dedication and for their hard work and everything that they've contributed to the citizens of this county. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you County Administrator Moore. I grant no further privilege or privilege of the floor regarding our public hearing. I will call that public hearing closed. At this time, I would like to ask our County Attorney, Mary Cassane, for a report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't have a substantive report this morning, however, I do want to publicly thank everyone in my office. Unfortunately, I've been out sick since Christmas. Every single person in my office has stepped up to ensure that our office continues to run smoothly and efficiently. Not only are the people in my office the most supportive group of individuals I've ever worked with, they're the most competent and able employees I've ever had the pleasure of working with. They not only kept the office running smoothly, but kept my family and I fed when we couldn't leave the house. I'm so lucky to work with these people every day, and the county is extremely lucky to have them as employees. This ends my report for today. I'm excited to be back, and I'm really hoping 2021 only improves from here.
Thank you County Attorney Mary Cassane. I appreciate that. At this time, Amanda, would you please read the reading of communications?
Yes, we have a November 2020 payment in the amount of $2,249 from Capital District Regional Off-Track Fitting Court, and the 2020 Regional- Regional Off-Track Fitting Court, and the 2020 Regional Benefit Distribution installment number one in the amount of $2,408 also from the OTB.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. At this point, we will move on to reading of resolutions.
Resolution number four was distributed to the members of the Board of Supervisors and posted to the Warren County website on January 12, which met the distribution deadline specified in the current rules of the Board and is therefore considered to be on the floor. Resolution numbers five through 21 were distributed to the Board and posted to the Warren County website on January 14. As this did not meet the mailing deadline specified in the current rules of the Board, a waiving of the rules will be required to bring these, all of these resolutions, to the floor.
Can I call for a motion regarding the, we're just gonna have to bear with me today because we've got a lot of waiving rules. Thank you Supervisor Garrity, a motion to waive the rules that's seconded by Supervisor Thomas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions five through 21 are now considered to be on the floor.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding Resolutions five through 21 from members of the Board? Hearing none, is there any discussion from members of the public regarding Resolutions five to 21? Mr. Lehman?
No public comment on YouTube related to these resolutions.
Are there any roll calls for five to 21? Thank you. At this time Supervisor Hogan, I believe you have a floor resolution that is required to come before us today, requested from you.
I do, thank you, County Attorney. I sent out an email last night to everybody, asking for your support for a floor resolution to set a public hearing at the time of our February meeting. There is a short grant opportunity that closes on March 5 through the CBPG that was brought to my attention by Wayne Lamont last night. In order to apply for this grant, which could fund infrastructure projects in various parts of the county, we need to have a public hearing, so we would have to set it today in order to hold it in February and meet the March 5 deadline. So I guess we needed a motion to waive the rule.
That motion is made by Supervisor Brainerd, seconded by Supervisor McGowan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Next, we'll need a motion to bring that resolution to the floor. That motion is made by Supervisor McDevitt, seconded by Supervisor McGowan. Any discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, thank you. That motion will now, or that resolution will now be?
Waiving rules resolution will be number 22, and the resolution setting in the public hearing will be number 23. You'll see those in writing after the meeting.
Supervisor Brainerd?
I'm not sure if you want to take it now, because I don't need a formal resolution, but I would like a motion from the Board to, related to the Moens Building demolition. Like, you can take that now or tell me.
Without objection?
Okay, thank you. I'll just explain quickly. The contractor in doing the demolition has discovered that more of the materials than were originally thought to be hauled away as not asbestos contaminated. If they are able to wash it down, they can haul some of the bricks and wood that are still kind of intact in big pieces, but we need to, in order for them to do that, we need to submit to the Department of Labor a request to amend our variance, which means getting permission from them to not treat it all as asbestos contaminated. So I would like a motion from the Board, it just has to be a simple motion. I can make the motion, in fact, that we submit that variance request to the Department of Labor.
Is that seconded? Supervisor McGowan with a second? Thank you.
And I'll just put in that we are requesting that the contractor pay for the cost of submitting that variance application to the Department of Labor, and so far they have agreed in concept to do that. There may be an additional cost if it takes them a couple of extra days, two, three days is what we're thinking, in order to do that. Obviously, that work is on them, but we do have a consultant that is on site to watch out for our interests and to make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to with the potentially asbestos contaminated materials, and that could cost up to $2,000. We do have that money in the Environmental Testing Reserve Fund, so I'm not worried about that, but I did want to make that, make you aware of it, and we'll try to limit that as much as possible. But I want to see this go forward without any delay, so I really hope that you guys will be understanding in that small cost that might occur, be incurred by the county, just to make sure that everything is done properly.
Thanks, Chairwoman. Thank you. Questions? Supervisor McDevitt?
Yeah, I just would like to say I support Claudia's efforts in this regard. I've been saying it for, you know, a couple of years. I mean, this, this is a, this is a, an eyesore that sits at the crossroads of Glens Falls and Queensbury. It's the first thing you see when you come in or exit, and it will be refreshing, positive, and I think economically will be a very positive moment for the county. So I really support Claudia's efforts here.
Thank you Supervisor McDevitt. And just so you know, for those of you on Zoom, I think I can still see far enough that if you wave your hand, I can see you, and I know that Amanda is checking the little green wave hands as well. So I believe I can see Supervisor Beatty, and then on the floor following him Supervisor McGowan, Supervisor Beatty.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, I'm all for, obviously, moving forward and getting this building torn down. The sooner we can get it back and the tax rolls, i.e. sold to someone, the better it is for all county residents, that's just common sense. So I look forward to assisting them, as long as there's no additional costs. I think it makes common, it's good common sense to do the right thing, so let's get this thing building down, as Mr. McDavitt said, it's an eyesore, and let's get it back, let's get it up for auction, and let's get it back, somebody buy it, and let's get it back on the county tax rolls. So I'm all for that.
Thank you Supervisor McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is much, much different than what kind of the rumor was yesterday, I'm trying, so the $2,000. I just, I've been on the record, and I, and I'm, I'll say this, that I did say that this, I knew this project is gonna cost us more money. I'm very pleased to hear that $2,000 is really a fair amount to get this on here, so I really appreciate all you've done. I just want to go on the record saying, and then, and then, and then, I told you also that it will certainly cost us some more money, but $2,000, I'm happy with, so let's keep moving forward and get this building out of Queensbury.
Thank you Supervisor McGowan. Is there anyone else that has a question before I yield back to Supervisor McDevitt? I believe that would be Supervisor Dickinson's hand.
Mr. Ruler? I have a question. I thought we were going to make a parking lot out of this property for the bicycle trail.
Thank you for your question Supervisor Dickinson. Supervisor Brainerd, would you, if you have any additional information regarding that?
As far as I know, the Board has not made a decision, a final decision on the future of that piece of property. Right now, my, my focus has been to get the building demolished. As everyone knows, I thought that we could do something to rehabilitate the building and maybe sell it to someone to use for, you know, a bike shop or an ice cream parlor or something, but that was not the will of the Board. So we went forward with the demolition, and I want to give a lot of credit to our real property director, Lexi Delory, has been working on this a lot, and really working it through the process and negotiating with these people, and she's been on site. Our public information officer has been on site taking photos and making sure everything's going smoothly. So that is my focus, and as far as I know, there is no, no determined outcome for the future of this property. It is a piece of Warren County property that has been taken into foreclosure, and we can do with it what we want.
Thank you Supervisor Brainerd. Our County Treasurer, Mike Swan?
Good morning, everybody. Just as a point of clarity, this property right now is in the auction scheduled for October of this year, all right? And that's for my instructions, because it was taken by, for back taxes, and that's the normal procedure. If this Board or the town of Queensbury wishes to do something else with that property, that's your discretion. You can move forward with whatever you want to do, but just so that you're clear, right now, it is headed for the auction in October.
Thank you Supervisor, thank you, Mike Swan. Are there any other questions before I go back to Supervisor McDevitt? Supervisor Straub?
Yes, you know, I've been working very hard to get this building removed despite the opposition from some of the other county supervisors, and I'm glad to know that we're going to get this down, and I want to thank Lexi for helping us do that. You know, and it has been mentioned that it could be a crossroads waystation for the trails that Glens Falls is developing and the trails that Queensbury are developing and tying in with Warren County's trail, that this would be an excellent opportunity to create a waystation area for bicyclists and pedestrians who wish to use the trails, because this location is an excellent crossroads location, as Supervisor McDevitt pointed out. So there, so indeed, I think the county should consider putting some kind of a waystation there. Given the triangular configuration of lot, and given the 30-foot setback that's required, there, there lies little developable remaining property, so I would doubt that there's any interest, outside interest in the property, and given the nature that it does have some brownfield tint to it, there is still some degree of pollution in the soils. So that's not going to suit well with people that might be interested in this. So I think at the end of the day, the county should seize the opportunity to create a great public amenity for this particular piece of property by creating a waystation, parking area, bicycle repair station, and so forth, and, and it could be part of the larger Empire Trail system. So I think the Board should consider that. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Straub. Are there other comments? Supervisor McDevitt?
I just, let's get the building torn down, number one. I know emotionally it rings kind of positively that, let's get it back on the tax rolls. Problem, having looked at this and kind of looked at a couple of diagrams, when you look at setbacks, when you look at parking requirements in the town of Queensbury, when you're looking at a piece of property that is literally just barely over an acre, you have a very small, small piece of property, and in trying to interest a commercial endeavor on is, it just, the property is just too small. But let's, let's get it torn down, and we can discuss, you know, what we're gonna do, you know, where we're going in the future.
Very good Supervisor McDevitt, thank you. Any further questions or discussion regarding this resolution? At this point in time, can I have a vote? I have to vote, right?
Vote on resolutions? We'll start with resolution number?
Oh, no, I have, for this one, right?
Yeah, was, was that one waived?
No, it's just.
Go ahead Supervisor.
Thank you, Chairwoman. We just needed a vote, we don't need to have a written resolution. Just the motions, which we didn't get.
Vote on, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what we're voting on.
Correct.
Thank you.
Without objection, I would call then for the vote on resolution, well, doesn't have an hour yet, on Supervisor Brainerd's request of resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving forward. Now we're gonna vote on resolution, I'm sorry Supervisor Leggett.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Presented in front of you was a resolution I wanted the Board to act on. This is a resolution that came out of passion from last week. I put it forward before Democratic Supervisors and for Republican Supervisors, and I took recommendations and advice from them on that, and this is what came before you. I pull this resolution, I will not bring this to the floor, because the substance and intent of it were carried down with a letter that was read by the Chairwoman, and that will be carried forward and will be part of the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much Supervisor Leggett. At this point in time, we'll begin voting on our resolutions before us.
Resolution number four, enacting Local Law Number Two of 2021 entitled "A Local Law Amending Local Law Number Five of 2009 Establishing the Office of Emergency Services for Warren County." Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Hogan?
Yeah.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straub?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Schuffler?
Yes.
Mr. Garrity?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Sorry, Mr. Diamond, that's, Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Brainerd?
Yeah.
Chairwoman Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution passes, and Resolution 21, which is amending the cable of organization and salary schedule. Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah.
Ms. Hogan?
Yeah.
Mr. Dickinson? Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straub?
No, and I'm voting no, because it's creating two new positions that look political to me and aren't really needed, and so I want to save $12,000 for the Warren County taxpayers by saying no.
Thank you Supervisor Straub. When we're finished, we'll address your comments.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Schuffler?
Yes.
Mr. Garrity?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Brainerd?
Yeah.
Chairwoman Seaver?
Yes. If I may at this point?
Resolution passes.
Thank you, that resolution passes. While there wasn't a request to have discussion on this particular reservation, I feel without objection if I could please just address Supervisor Straub's concern and for the matter of public information and transparency. During this process, as we looked at modifying our Board structure, many suggestions came forward about, is there a way to have multiple vice chairs, and is there a way to have additional leadership positions? I'm very appreciative to both our County Attorney's Office, our County Administration, and our County Clerk, who worked tirelessly to look through decades and decades of resolutions, local laws, state laws, and what came to light was that in 1968, we had, bear with me, because I have it, number eight, I think? Rule one, regardless, there's a resolution from 1968 that was passed, and it established the position of Vice Chair and Finance Chair. And what that was, and that resolution was fine, and it continued till about 1994, and in 1994 and 1995, a stipend was attached to the Vice Chair and Finance Chair. At that point in time, I am sure with all good intent, they believed that that was possible. There was additional language somewhere along the line that there could be a stipend for our fiscal coordinator. And will be clear that our Treasurer's Office has done an exceptional job with our budget, and at that time, they had allocated that additional section in the law to the Treasurer's Office, is from what I understand. And moving forward, we continued to carry on the Vice Chair and the Finance Chair stipend. We found out that that was incorrect as we started to look at what was going on with our restructuring. Many times, we're not perfect. Many times, we don't have the ability to go back decades and look at all of the information, and we are as good as the information that is before us and that we continue to seek. This Board is committed to research, to transparency, and accountability, and as such, we needed to step up the plate this year. So what we did, with full research and support from our legal team, and again from our County Administrator, we went ahead and spoke with members of our Board, and we found out under the law that we could have a position of Chair, a position as Majority Leader, a position of Minority Leader, and the Budget Officer. This is done all around the state of New York and is completely well- This is done all around the state of New York and is completely well within the guidelines of any type of legislative body like we are. The majority, and you may assign additional duties to a majority and a minority leader. In the period of 2021, it was decided on that we would go ahead and assign duties of the vice chair and finance chair to the majority leader. And that position is then a chair appointment. Supervisor Doug Beatty was asked to lead in that capacity. We also then established that for, for the year of 2021, minority leaders additional responsibilities would be personnel chair. That then was appointed to Supervisor Bremer. This was then established and requests were made for each political affiliation to caucus. We are legally permitted to do that. Again, thank you to our county attorney's office for researching that and ensuring that we had the proper documentation in front of us. We move forward, and just this week, we had a very simple, respectful, and productive caucus on both of our beheads. This took place last evening. I appreciate everyone who participated in that. But in no way, shape, or form is this to leave out anyone who is not affiliated with a party. We represent the people. Supervisor Craig Leggett is not affiliated with a party, and as such, we certainly appreciate and respect the position that you bring to the board in your opinions. In an effort for full transparency and cooperation, Supervisor Leggett and I committed to each other that weekly, we would make sure we check in. We provided some priorities that he would like to see move forward on this board. I notified him of the caucus. He was notified and provided the information of this committee's structure, dates moving forward, and much information that went into how we made our appointments also. At the same time, I followed up with him after our caucus and then followed up with majority and minority leaders to make sure that those common grounds were provided to us. And we are going to be dedicated to meeting monthly as caucuses and to make sure that we always bring the information in front of each other. This was not a political move. This was an effort for us to unify as a board. Now, as it relates to the finances behind it, I'm very pleased to tell you that I am not a fan either of, of spending tax money when we don't have to. So in that vein, I reduced the stipend of the chair of the board. And with full support, we reduced the stipend for the majority leader, allowed by law, the minority leader, allowed by law, and the budget officer, allowed by law. That was done with 100% support and agreement from not only Supervisor Bremer, Supervisor Beatty, and Supervisor Thomas. We had support as well from our county administrator, county clerk, and county attorney. I'm very pleased to say we are returning money to the general fund. Approximately $3,000. It might be a little more than that. But we did want to move forward and make those changes while we were saving money as well for the taxpayer. But more importantly, just as importantly, we were communicating and unifying and leading by example. I appreciate everyone's feedback in that. I called every single supervisor on Monday, and we've had continued dialogue since last Friday. And I promise all of you that that dialogue will not continue at the same level and frequency that it has been. I assure Supervisor Merlino I will teach him how to block me on his phone for all hours of the night so that I don't wake him up. And again, I could not, I could not appreciate more. Every single supervisor would agree to chair, sit on committees, and work collaboratively. That is a general message of a unified message from Supervisor Leggett, from our majority party and from our minority party. And I look forward to moving forward in such a fashion. Are there questions regarding why those resolutions were amended or were being today and the policies and procedures were changed? Supervisor McDavid?
My question is this, so you are basically saying that the net, we are, we are saving money by, by, by paying Supervisor Beatty an additional $6,000 and Supervisor Bremer an additional $6,000.
No, sir. It's just a point of clarification. What I am saying, and, and I mean, I cannot, I'm sure of the exact numbers. The finance chair was making approximately $8,900 before that. We reduced that to $6,000. The budget officer was making, I think, $9,900 and something dollars. We reduced that to $6,000. The chair of the board was making a stipend of approximately $23,000 and something. And the, I, I think I'm pretty close with the numbers here. Yeah, 22,654. We then took that collective amount of about $41,000 and reduced that, thereby creating the position under the law, which is allowed of the minority leader for personnel, recognizing the incredible work that also goes into that, but how important it was to be able to have a minority leader as well. And I think we have established this week the benefit of communication and collaboration. So we are returning that approximately $3,000 and change to the general fund.
Okay, so again, my question is when you.
Yes Supervisor McDevitt, I appreciate your question, but in transparency and the rule of commitment to the Roberts Rules of Order, I will come right back to you. Are there any questions or comments before I return back to Supervisor McDevitt? Supervisor Bremer?
Thank you. One of the things that you didn't address was the stipend of the personnel chair prior to this year. Could you please?
I'd be happy to. Prior to that, up until 2017, that position was combined personnel chair and finance chair. And in 2017, they went ahead and made a resolution to separate that. Then at that time, personnel was removed, finance was removed. So with the intent of past practices to go back and also to do it in a legal and appropriate fashion under the accordance of the law, that then, that was how we moved forward. Does that answer your question Supervisor Bremer? It does. Are there other questions? Supervisor Straub?
Yes. Who decided who was going to be the leaders of these political positions? I mean, how did that get decided?
I'm happy to defer to our county attorney under the advice that I have received from members not only of the board, administration, and upon reviewing the law, that was due to the position of vice chair, finance chair, and personnel, that those could be appointed positions by the chair and then supported by the caucuses afterwards as we spoke. And because of the delegated duties to both of those positions. But at this time, whether our county administrator or our county attorney would like to weigh in, that would be absolutely fine. At this time, our county administrator.
I, I could speak to the statutes that the chair has referenced. County law, county law section 200, which is not a law that's passed by the county of Warren. It's a state law. It's just, it's called county law. It provides the umbrella under which counties that are organized like ours operate. And when I say organized like ours, I mean non-charter counties. There are county, larger counties like Westchester, a lot of these bigger ones are charter counties. We're a non-charter county, so we have to operate under the umbrella of county law. County law 200 speaks to how you can pay members of the board of supervisors. Members of the board of supervisors are supposed to all get the same salary unless they're one of three positions. And that would be chairman of the board, majority leader, and minority leader. And that was the deficiency that I guess we've had all of these years, going back to when the, the vice chairs started to get the stipend. And, and we don't know what the historical basis of that was because it was about 25 years ago. We looked through all our files and couldn't find any, any record of debate on that. But, but that's what county law 200 says. You can, you can give an extra, extra salary to the majority leader, the minority leader, and the chair in rec, in, in recognition of the extra workload. County law section 351 deals with the budget officer. The budget officer doesn't necessarily have to be a member of the board of supervisors. But county law section 351 states that if it is a member of the board of supervisors, it can either be the chair of the board, or it can be the chair of the budget review committee. In our case, that's, that's the budget committee. And county law section 351 authorizes an additional salary to be paid to the budget officer. So that's the legal structure that we're speaking of.
Yeah, but that doesn't answer my question.
Excuse me Supervisor Straub, at this point, I, I want to just go back to give anyone else an opportunity.
Yeah, well, well, you didn't answer my first question. My first question was who appoints the political positions? That being the board majority leader and the board minority leader. I mean, it's a simple question.
Time Supervisor Straub requested point of order. We'll follow Roberts rules. We have other supervisors.
You didn't answer my first question.
Supervisor Garrity?
The chairman of the board gets to appoint those officers.
Thank you Supervisor Garrity. Are there any other questions from anyone that has not yet been heard? We'll give one more opportunity, or second opportunity to speak Supervisor McDavid.
Trying to get an answer to current system, this is what it's costing the Warren County taxpayers. More system, this is what it's costing. Is it, is, is it more or is it less?
It is less Supervisor McDevitt. Would you like those numbers?
Yeah, let's just give them a, yeah, it's on resolution, apologies. Resolution 21 has those numbers in there. The chair of the board is 22,654. The vice chair is 8,404. And the budget officer is 9,992. Those are the amounts that are in the salary schedule currently that were adopted into the budget. If you add those up, it's $41,050. The proposed changes would be $20,000 for the chair and $6,000 for each of the other positions, budget officer, minority leader, majority leader. So that adds up to $38,000, gives you a total savings of $3,050.
Thank you Supervisor McDevitt. Are there secondary questions? Supervisor Straub?
Yes, thank you. So you get to appoint the majority and minority leaders. Well, if, if someone has dissension and disagreement with you, you certainly aren't going to appoint them. So I just, I, the bottom line is we could save $12,000 here, and we should.
Supervisor Straub, I appreciate your comments. I, Supervisor Bremer, who is minority leader, would like to talk about her ability to speak with her caucus. And, you know, I, I certainly can have Supervisor Beatty talk about his, we've all met. I don't know if that's necessary at this point in time. You can decline, or you can decide to say something Supervisor Bremer.
Thank you Chairman. I would like to decline to get into the internal workings of the Democratic caucus at this time. We did have a caucus yesterday, and we will look to go forward with our caucus meetings in an appropriate manner discussing legal matters as we did yesterday. And I also want to assure this board that I was able to meet with the department heads yesterday during Chairwoman Seaver's department head meeting. And I really appreciate her inviting me, and I intend to do a lot of hard work here. And it's going to take me away from, what you guys all know is my own practice. I, I have work that I do for myself, and this will take time away from that. And I appreciate the opportunity to serve the board and go forward. That's my only statement.
Thank you Supervisor Bremer. Supervisor Beatty? You're on you.
Excuse me. I think it's been clearly said, there'll be a savings of $3,000 from past years. I think that's unprecedented, that the, that that's money going back into the county caucuses. So, you know, I, I think that says it all. The taxpayers are being well served by that. So I think your, your comments and Ms. Bremer say it all. So, thank you.
At this point, I, and without objection, I would like to start to close discussion on this. However, and, and I'm not going to raise the hands, I just want to remind all of you that the majority and the minority leader, while they're now established, you may decide at any point in time to have different duties that would associate with them. It's a lot of work that they're both asked to do, and I can assure you that this week has been incredibly busy. And I would thank Supervisor Straub for his questions to bring up such an important discussion here today. And I do recognize that those other questions on the boardroom, Supervisor Garrity?
I just have a statement to make. Somebody sits there and said it's unprecedented to save this county money. I saved the county over $200,000 when I was forced to be, by rule, administrator. And then I stayed on administrator for another, about a year and a half. So don't say it's unprecedented, please. Let's state the fact. We are saving money, which I, I agree with it. I'm happy with the positions. That is, the chairman's right to do that. But other people have saved this county a lot of money, and other people have worked a lot of hours away from their other jobs to do things. So please, let's just clarify. I mean, I, I fully support this. I think this is a great way going forward.
Supervisor Garrity, thank you for your comments. And I know sometimes Zoom is a little hard to hear. I think he was just referring to the specific $3,000 that was reduced from those stipends and giving back to the budget. I am so excited to hear many, many of us say that we have all had a collective role in not only saving money, but working together. And I'm sure that was the intent of which is difficult to hear on.
I'm sure it was.
I'm positive. So I just, again, am so excited for the commitment of this board to move forward respectfully. Supervisor Leggett?
Thank you Chairwoman Seaver. The vice chairman used to sit in the chairperson's seat in the absence of the chair. Who will do that now?
By the statutory requirements, the vice chair, it will be within that position of the majority leader because we may not have the legal authority to appoint that vice chair, from what I understand, from what I've been told. And I've not explained that correctly. We'll have our county administrator do it.
It's my understanding in 1968, local law, which was passed by the Warren County government, equates the vice chair position to the, to the finance chair. So it's the finance chair that would, that would perform those duties. The pieces I referenced earlier in the county law, those relate strictly to the set, to the stipend phase.
And I will also, that's a good point Supervisor Leggett. I do think moving forward, we need to really review a lot of the different resolutions that may be out of date. I do believe that there's other parts of that resolution that will need to come before us for a public hearing so that we can notify our public of some of those changes. But those changes have not yet been made, and I look forward, I hope Supervisor Leggett, with your involvement and your appointment to NACO, that you'll have an opportunity to help us with some of that legislation this year and clean some of those things up. So I'm counting on you for that. Thank you. Are there other questions? Supervisor Conover, I see your hand.
Thank you Chairwoman. Just, I, I don't have any issue with the reorganization. In fact, I think it brings a certain logic to, and it brings us into compliance, so I don't have any problem with that. However, to the point that Supervisor Straub brought up, I think that going forward, I, I don't think it's wise going forward to have the majority party picking the minority leader. I think that the minority caucus should provide that to us. I don't think that needs to be changed necessarily today because there seems to be general consensus among all of us regarding how we're going to move forward at this moment in time. But I think that to the question of who selects, and you would expect that the majority chairperson would have great sway within the majority caucus as to who the majority leader should be. However, in terms of the minority, I think that the minority party should select its own minority leader. And I think that going forward, I think maybe that issue should be revisited. And, and perhaps we should, might want to consider an amendment on that so that the minority leader is selected by the minority party. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Conover. Your points are well taken. And again, I believe that there was discussion regarding that in both caucuses, but not a formal vote taken. I can only speak for our majority caucus, and I am more than happy to move forward in the future with our majority caucus to help coordinate and mediate that dialogue. And I am sure that that dialogue will also be committed to being completed with the minority party as well. But I, I agree, and I, I hope Supervisor Conover, that we can count on you to work with Supervisor Leggett as we look at restructuring and looking at some of those previous documents. I think you bring an incredible amount of attention to detail to that, and I, I look forward to it. Are there other comments or questions regarding this? Did you speak on this one yet Peter?
I, I, this is my best.
This is a new one. Okay.
This is.
Supervisor McDevitt?
Thank you.
Sure.
The more I've heard about the issue, I, I'm a little bit unsure of, of how I feel about it. I personally need a little more time to think about it. And that being the case, I, I will vote no on the issue. I'll change my vote from yes to no.
I believe we have already voted on that. And because we don't normally have the change after the vote, I'm sure what we can do is make that documented so that your intent is absolutely reflected. And I appreciate the support of this board moving forward. And it is, of course, unprecedented that we are moving and changing, and unprecedented in a way, Supervisor Garrity, that we're just changing the actual leadership structure so that it does reflect in accordance with the law. And that specific one, I don't believe has been done before. And that is no reflection at all about the, the attention we've given this matter previously. It's just simply that we're all taking. about the, the attention we've given this matter previously. It's just simply that we're all taking a look at this information now and trying to make it as in compliance and effective as we can. So Supervisor Garrity, I appreciate your input on that and the work you've done to help make that happen. So thank you.
I can only say, you know, it was done according to the rules as it's set up. Nobody did anything that they, they followed the rules as it's set up and it's a Chairman's appointment.
So I look forward to all of us talking more about the rules of the board and also the, the organizational structure in 2022. And 2021 will be full of a lot of good dialogues that we can certainly help that Chairperson next year in coordinating those efforts and moving forward. And with that, I'll close the discussion. Without objection on that top, although Supervisor Conover, you, this is your second opportunity and we'd love to.
Thank you. I just, I just want to say to my colleagues that while I'm comfortable at this moment in time, I, I'm, I'm also, I would say to the the minority party that I'm receptive to a changing of the rules at some point in time as to how the minority leader is selected. I mean, it seems that we're in general concert right now and I'm, and I'm good with that, but I think that just logic tells me going forward that the majority party shouldn't be selecting the minority leader going forward. I think the minority caucus should select the minority leader going forward. And I just would say to my colleagues that this supervisor would be receptive to an appropriate amendment of the rules at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Conover. I think we're all on the same page to be able to make amendments and have discussion as we move forward throughout this year in a unified, respectful manner. And I also am under the understanding that even though that appointment for Personnel Chair was made in accordance with the law, assigning it to the minority leader, that there are discussions taking place in that party as well. And should something change, we are more than willing to hear that because here on this board and this year, we are going to stay wide open to those discussions. And Supervisor Leggett, I want you to understand in no way, shape or form do I want you to feel like when we say bipartisan, that that leaves you out of those discussions. Again, I, as Chair, have the ability to say that we will continue to meet, continue to talk and probably won't keep calling you at 6:00 AM like I did this morning, but we will continue to have that dialogue.
Thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you. And with that, we are going to have a collective vote on the balance of the resolutions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And much care is and I very, very much appreciate that. Next, we will move to the privilege of the floor. Mr. Lehman. Well, you know what? First, let me say, before we go to privilege of the floor, typically we go to the public first. Oh, I'm sorry. Stand corrected. Privilege of the floor to our public. Mr. Lehman.
Good morning. We'll start with the YouTube comments. We have one from Gina Minzer wishing everyone a Happy New Year to our new board. We have one from Zane Beldon saying, way to go mom for his mother Pat Beldon and her award. Alexandra Beldon also saying woo, congrats. And Alexandra has also been, that, that's Pat's daughter. She's been a huge part of helping out down there in public health throughout all this. Gina Minzer thanked Pat, said, Pat, thank you for your service in all the ways you have met each and every challenge this pandemic, this pandemic has presented. Karen Duroz said, congratulations Rebecca Hill on 30 years. And we also have some email comments that were sent in. Let's see, we can start on the public health theme. We had one from Beecher Baker, who's the Superintendent of Schools for Hadley Luzern Central School, who wrote, I would like to publicly acknowledge the Warren County Public Health Department for their professional expertise, incredible work ethic and compassion in working with Warren County schools during this pandemic. We at Hadley Luzern are grateful for the relationship that has developed and the trust that we have in each other to do the right things for our children and staff. I cannot say enough great things about the department and specifically Janelle Jones and Pat Beldon. They are incredible people to work with and our school is eternally grateful. Many thanks. Beecher Baker Senior, Superintendent of Schools. We also have a number of emails that were sent in, in reference to Supervisor Leggett's letter and the post article about the potential resolution. Here's one from Bernice Menis, M-E-N-N-I-S. I very much support Leggett's clear, simple, important resolution condemning the terrible violence at the Capitol and the simple, necessary affirmation of the fair election of Biden and Harris. To think of this issue as divisive or unnecessary because not directly involved with Warren County is almost unreal. Warren County is part of our country going through dangerous times. Simple statements like this must be spoken aloud. To silence our voice or to see it as divisive feels immoral. Signed Bernice Menis. Here's one from Diane Collins on the same subject. Please share with the Board of Supervisors my strong endorsement of the Leggett resolution and my request to pass it on. We cannot look away from the violent insurrection attack on the Capitol of the United States and our elected officials by misinformed lawbreakers. Thank you Diane Collins. Here's one on the same subject from Paul Nazrani, N-A-S-R-A-N-I. I reside in Lake George and founded my business at Aronak Creamery in Warren County. The horrific attack on the Capitol last week has shaken our democracy to its core. January 6, 2020 was the only time outside of the War of 1812 that our government has been directly attacked and its processes attempted to be physically overthrown. The emerging photographic evidence reveals members of far-right anti-government and neo-Nazi groups murdering a police officer and directly threatening the lives of our Vice President and Congressional Leadership. These groups have been given legitimacy to act and as a direct result, President Donald J. Trump's claims of a fraudulent election based on information and conspiracy theories, all of which have been disproven in multiple court cases and dismissed by state election officials as well as his own Director of the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency. For the sake of our country and for the safety and interests of all people in the North Country, including our elected officials and law enforcement, I'm sorry, our election officials and law enforcement, please issue a formal statement denouncing the violent attacks on the Capitol, affirming the legitimacy of the November 20th, November 2020 elections locally and nationally and expressing the need for a peaceful transfer of power on January 20, 2021. Here's one from a Mary Beth Mylot Fasano of Bolton Landing. I want to express my support for Supervisor Leggett's resolution at the County Board of Supervisors meeting today, January 15. I think our county election officials worked very hard in the last election and their work should be acknowledged for the safe process they completed for voters of Warren County. We must acknowledge the winners locally and nationally because Warren County election officials are professional and they maintained integrity at every step of the election process. National election officials did the same. Secondly, I believe the board should condemn the violence that occurred last week at our, at our nation's Capitol. The people who caused the violence could not accept the results of a fair and safe election and should be prosecuted for the crimes they committed. Furthermore, I believe there should be a peaceful transfer of power next week. Please vote to support Supervisor Leggett's resolution. Let Warren County stand for democracy. Thank you. Here's one from a Jane Kana, K-A-N-A. Dear Supervisors, these are times to stand tall and to be courageous. I fully support the position, the position of taking a position against the rebellious group who attacked the Capitol Building recently. I encourage you as a group to do so and stand for what is right and good in the United States. Jane Kana. And we have one from a Ginger, Ginger Kuzel, K-U-E-N-Z-E-L, Ginger Henry Kuzel. Dear Ms. Seber and Edna Fraser, congratulations Ms. Seber on being elected to your new role as Chair of the Board. Today I'm writing about an urgent matter. Now is not the time for Warren County to engage in partisan politics. It is time to show the residents of our county and state that Warren County is taking a stand in, in favor of uniting the country. Supervisor Leggett's resolution, which you will hopefully consider on Friday, should be voted upon immediately. Our town and county leaders need to take an immediate and public stand to demonstrate that you unequivocally stand by the 2020 election process and results conducted by Warren County and that you acknowledge the election of President-elect Joe Biden. Representatives who continue, continue to contest, contest the results of that election despite all evidence need to hear that Warren County does not support these efforts, which only serve to divide the country and threaten our democracy. The resolution's language expressing appreciation to election officials and poll workers in our county who worked hard to ensure our free and fair elections is also something that you should be able to support. Furthermore, since I think I can assume that neither of you condones the violence and destruction that occurred at the Capitol Building on January 6, it should not be a problem for you to approve the language in Supervisor Leggett's resolution. While I am a firm believer in process, as Edna knows from my, from the time we served together on the Hague Town Board, it should never be used as a convenient excuse to delay an urgent resolution. Hope that I can count on both of you to carefully consider and then support Supervisor Leggett's resolution. It certainly should shed a positive light on our county and its leaders and demonstrate a commitment to unifying the people of our county and our country. Thank you for your consideration. Best regards, Ginger Henry Kuzel. And I do have a couple others here that I got to dig through. Okay, these are both from Christine Straub regarding the, this, in appointments that were just discussed. At-large Supervisor Beatty now refers to himself as Majority Leader and there are other references to Minority Leader. If the title Majority Leader, if the title Majority Leader, Minority Leader refers to the makeup of the board by gender, couldn't that be considered sexist? If the title Majority Leader, Minority Leader refers to the political affiliation of the Board of Supervisors, couldn't that be considered partisan? Chairwoman Seber has touted bipartisanship. Wouldn't that undermine our bipartisanship? Also, if these are new leadership positions, doesn't that create another layer of government? Also, are there stipends with the newly created positions? I don't know if you want to address those now or you want to have me to read the second one, which has some similar questions from her?
Well, Mr. Lehman, as it relates to that particular question, I believe they have been addressed in detail earlier during the record of this meeting. You'd like to go to her second letter?
I understand, this is again from Christine Straub. I understand the selection of the committee chairs is the decision of the Chairperson of the Board of Supervisors. However, I would like to point out 2019 election votes. At-large Supervisor Beatty snagged the last seat on the board with 3,203 votes. At-large Supervisor Wilde received the most votes received on the Board of Supervisors at 3,504 votes. Town Supervisor and Member of the Board of Supervisor Straub received the most votes of any sitting Supervisor at 4,311. Supervisor Beatty chairs three committees. Supervisor Wilde chairs zero committees. Town Supervisor Straub chairs zero committees. Can Chairperson Seber take this question?
Absolutely. Thank you Mrs. Straub. I appreciate you taking the time to reach out to our board. Um, I, and Don, keep me focused on those three questions. I believe the first one was regarding Supervisor Wilde, who he and I have spent a considerable amount of time together this week. Supervisor Wilde has worked very hard with an economic task force that has brought together private, public sector in our community. But given the time that he has spent on that and actually it was his suggestion that we, and it made perfect sense that we reduce the size of our committees and the number of committees that we give to our members of the board, certainly recognizing as Supervisor Garrity said it earlier, we all have not only obligations in the private sector, but many of our board members, approximately 50%, also work very hard running their municipalities. So we look forward to that continued relationship. And, you know, so that discussion, Supervisor Wilde, I'll get right, if you can, let me continue please. The second question was regarding Supervisor Leggett. Supervisor Leggett and I have also had many conversations about board appointments. In fact, I called and spoke to every single member of our board with the exception of Supervisor Straub, who did email me back and I certainly appreciate his input on those committee selections as well. It's tough when you reduce committees and you try to meet the need of all of our, and wishes of all of our members. But I think we've done an incredible job of being able to communicate, large in part because of those leadership positions, but also because of the hard work that everyone has put in all week long. So again, I certainly appreciate that unity. I think I've addressed those questions and since it is during the public comment period, Don, I would ask you to continue reading the public comments.
That is all the public comment we have at this time.
Thank you very much. At this point in time, I would request privilege of the floor for our supervisors on this board, Supervisor Garrity.
Yeah, I was handed a news release from Lake George area. Winterfest wristbands are now on sale. This was handed to me. I hope everybody will get a copy of this. This gets sent out to the supervisors. I don't know where it came from. I think it came from tourism. But the Winterfest wristbands are now on sale. And then the second part of this is, I still have concerns about us promoting this event. I think it's for February. Because I'm just getting into tourism. I know we're trying to promote business in February and I know there's pros and cons to doing this. And I know they need to put together a, a safety plan that has to be submitted to the county and I don't believe it's happened yet. Maybe it did. I don't know. But I'm just saying, I want to see businesses flourish. But every day we get a list of increased number of cases and now we're asking, we're asking people from outside the area to come into our area to support our businesses. I'm just not sure. I, I really, I, I'm just not sure if this is the right thing to do. I know the committee advanced it. So I just, I bring those points up today and I just hope everybody, everybody in every, every aspects of where we are, just think a little bit more about this. I, I know it's not about the almighty dollar. I, I get that. It isn't really. It's tried to spur something in the wintertime, which we all would hope for. But I think, you know, with a roll out of vaccines is lagging up here and then now we're still asking people to come in to our communities, you know. I will ask that they distribute the news release and I would ask that the organizers of this event continue to keep our concerns in mind.
Thank you Supervisor.
Please.
Thank you Supervisor Garrity. I'd like to go one step further after hearing from Supervisor Schuppler this week as well, moving into this meeting. Is, given the fact that this starts in the month of February, would it be permissible and would you not object to adding on an occupancy tax and tourism meeting in the coming few days so that we could hear directly from the organizers during our meeting schedule on the COVID safety plans, which while they have not been filed with the county, we are going to ask that they are filed for your committee meeting.
I think they have one on the 25th. Is that soon enough of January for you or do you want to move it up?
I think given the great concern, it would be wonderful to have that moved up and we'll work with the scheduling if.
Just whatever Amanda, Amanda wants to come up with, I'm, I'm.
You're agreeable. Supervisor Schuppler, is that agreeable?
That's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Without objection from the board regarding that, and I can certainly have a roll call on that as well, Supervisor Wilde, I see your hand and I'm going right down the road to get to you. If we can make that happen, that would be great. Supervisor Wilde, the floor is yours sir.
Madam Chairwoman, thank you. I have no objection to having the, the group promoting Winterfest come in and convey their plans. It makes sense based on changes that occur here with the COVID virus. But I would like to make a comment in, in just an oversight on your State of the County as far as our sales tax. I know that we need to recognize the county individuals that were involved with our budgeting and trying to make sure that we were able to maintain our revenues and keep our budget straight. But there was a large group of individuals that you didn't mention that were the private sector that came together, started to communicate with each other. And there may be questions about the value that they added to our local economy this summer. I myself have no doubts that they added significant value. And I just would like to call out and recognize them for their hard work, their lack of political desire. They're purely communicating with each other, taking time out of their own business to help support this county and revenues that this county sees. And again, I'd like to commend them for them help, their help and support them moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Wilde. And just in response, my only hope was that I didn't keep you here until 3 o'clock this afternoon with the State of the County. I did read the last 10 states of the county and there was a lot of information about why everyone had different committees and how we changed structure. And because we made such an effort to meet together in the last week, you know, I did, I did talk to everyone that I would try to keep it short. Notwithstanding that, I have a great appreciation for the members of our community and I so look forward to that private, public relationship. And to Supervisor Wilde's point, I appreciate his passion and energy that he brings to this as well. But you know what? That's a very, very valid point. And I was wondering if Supervisor, I keep calling him Supervisor. I must want him to run. If I could have Trish Swan, oh, without objection, speak to us about the impact of the occupancy tax and where. If I could have Treasurer Swan, oh, without objection, speak to us about the impact of the occupancy tax and where we're at. It is really important that we keep our eye, not just on tourism, but our overall economic growth here in Warren County. Supervisor.
No, I'm not running. In order, I run.
Understood.
I refuse if I'm nominated.
Good. Treasurer Swan.
The occupancy tax, I really don't have kind of pre information right now on. We were down 17, 18% the last time we looked. However, on the positive side, my staff is completely overwhelmed right now with the payments that have come in from the short-term rentals, because we went from having 250 checks coming in to over 1,000. Okay, so the stack is like that. I don't have totals yet. I don't dare ask them. I'm waiting for them to process everything. We should have something, I mean, we will definitely have figures in March. I wanna try to get something in the middle of February is exactly where we ended up in 2020. We're gonna be down. There's no question. But we're not down as much as what I anticipated. And I would just like to say about the sales tax, thank you for liberating that we're down 1.2%, which is just phenomenal. I mean, considering everything that happened in 2020, I was praying that we would only be down 2% and it was less than that. So I, you know, I think we did, yeah, very, did very well, not kind of what.
Well, thank you. Your prayers were heard, and we appreciate your efforts. And I believe I'm starting to cross over from privilege of the floor into announcements. So we will firm that up as we move forward, so I make sure I get that right. Supervisor Bremer, then Supervisor McDavid.
Thank you so much. This is less of announcement and more of taking the opportunity for privilege of the floor. But in light of all of the public comments that I've received over the week, and particularly those that we heard today through Mr. Lehman, reading all of those comments, I do want to say that I am very proud of this board for our bipartisan statement condemning violence around the country, and in particular, what happened last week at the Capitol. It was very upsetting to all of us, and I'm glad that we were able to come together and put forward a statement about that and that we stand by and are grateful for our board of elections here in Warren County. And also that we are acknowledging the election of President Joseph Biden and Kamala Harris to our president and vice president on January 20th. I really appreciate that we were able to pull together and compromise to make that statement come out of Warren County. It's really, it's really great, and I'm proud to see that. I also wanna take another moment to say that I know everyone here, regardless of party, is committed to a fair and efficient distribution of the vaccines in Warren County and to working with the governor's office to iron out obstacles that may be hindering our ability to maximize distribution to our residents. One way that I plan to contribute to the board this year is to confer with our Department of Health, Janelle Jones, our county administrator, our Director of Public Affairs, Director of Office of Emergency Services, our Chairwoman, and all my colleagues on this board to identify and understand problems with the vaccine processes and procedures coming out of the state as we encounter those, and that we will accurately convey those problems to the governor's office representatives with the goal of assisting the state to find solutions to those problems. As we already know, and we're hearing from our seniors in particular, there's a high demand for vaccines. So the information that the state put out about Warren County vaccination sites and reports and appointments needs to be timely and accurate. And for instance, there, there were errors in the information that was put out. We need to identify them and work with our state officials to correct the information as quickly as possible. And I am committed to working with our dedicated staff and my elected officials here at the county to work those out. And working with our business partners, and most importantly, all of our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bremer. I do see the hands up on Zoom. Amanda's making me a list as they all arise. But before that, we did have a hand of Supervisor McDavid.
Just very briefly, I think one of the things going forward with a change in administrations, a very powerful and significant position in the U.S. Senate is Majority Leader. I believe we have to reach out, and I think we are currently doing that as we speak. I spent some time with Jim Seth on the other day, and we both, I think, agreed on the importance of developing a positive relationship with the new Majority Leader as we, as we move forward. With new Majority Leaders, there, there is there's just an opportunity, I, I, to, in terms of economics, in terms of helping this county go forward, that if we indeed are strategic and good about this, that we will indeed, I think, win the day in terms of our fair share of economic dollars for positive development in Warren County. And, and just a thank you to Craig. Thank you for your courage in bringing forth your resolution. You started the ball rolling, and I thank you for that. It was important and well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor McDavid. I'm sure we all support those comments, Supervisor McDavid, and also working with our Senator, both Schumer and Senator Gillibrand. Thank you. Next up on our list, we had Supervisor Conover.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just wanted to say, just in accordance with our rules, the Chairman of Finance is not only the, also the Majority Leader, but is also the Deputy Chairperson of the Board. And I just wanna congratulate Supervisor Beatty on that position and is part of our organization, reorganizational effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conover.
Thank you, Supervisor Conover. And yes, congratulations to Supervisor Beatty. Normally, we would have talked a little bit more at every organizational meeting. So I appreciate that opportunity today for us to have this in-depth dialogue. Supervisor Strau, your hand was up next.
Yes, thank you. Well, two things. One is in reference to Chris Strau's thing is, yes, you have a county supervisor that probably understands in greater depth than any other county supervisor the issues facing Queensberry, and that person does not land a chairmanship. And that's hard to defend when another supervisor has three chairmanships. You know, and to remove me from the Bloom Festival, all right. Well, we know where this is going. But there's another more important topic. And that is Craig Leggett's resolution. His resolution was an opportunity for us to vote for and show unity. And we voting unanimously, I believe it should have been, a vote that shows unanimity. And to have voted otherwise shows otherwise. But Joseph Warren, he said that you depend, and on you depend the fortunes of America. You are decide the important question on what's the rest of happiness and liberty of millions yet unborn. Act worth of yourselves. All right, that is, Joseph Warren is our county's namesake. He would have voted for this resolution. In downtown Glens Falls, we have the Civil War Monument. And that is dedicated to those soldiers. They did not run from injustice. They did not hide from wrongfulness. They gave their lives defending the truth. So, you know, there was a slurry of emails going before the county supervisors asking for us not to put this to a vote. We should have clearly have put this to a vote. But every one of those 644 soldiers listed on that Civil War Monument would have voted for this resolution. I find it very difficult that anyone would be opposed to Craig Leggett's resolution. It had three truths. One, we were opposed to the January 6, 2021 storming of our nation's capital. Number two, we recognize that the election was valid. Three, we recognize that our president as of January 20th will be Joseph Biden. All right. Who would disagree with that? So putting this as a proclamation to avoid a vote is just not the right thing to do. If you wanted to vote in disagreement, you had that opportunity to do so. But I think that the rest of the Board of Supervisors should have joined me, Joseph Warren, and 644 Civil War soldiers to vote in support of that resolution and stand together and stand for truth. So I, the proclamation is better than nothing, but this should have been brought to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Strau. And I certainly, I'm sure we all do appreciate those passionate comments. A couple points of clarification. It is not a proclamation. We wrote a letter and developed a letter, put that into the record, so fortify the board. And we will send that letter to those individuals that were listed previously on, on that letter. And just to recap, that's Senator Schumer, Senator Gillibrand, Congresswoman Stefanik, State Senator Steck, State Assemblyman Simpson, and to all other persons or entities so desired by the board, including but not limited to all elected supervisors and elected regardless of political affiliation in Warren County. That being said, I also wanted to let you know that while we did make every attempt to communicate, I'm so sorry we weren't able to connect by phone, but I did appreciate your email asking to be Facilities of Chair. At that time, the Facilities of Chair had been expressed by several members of our board and appointed to Supervisor McGowan, given his private business and expertise in that particular area. Also with his involvement in the Facilities Chair previously. You did, however, ask to be put on occupancy tax tourism, which you were appointed to. And the only other committee you asked was about facilities, which you were appointed to. And then I think I did appoint you to a couple other things too. Regarding the special appointment for the Bloom Festival, while that was not included in your conversations with me via email, that decision was made because we believe the town of Queensberry does have you representing them. Amanda, as our clerk of the board, had contacted them several times. And I also wanna state that upon talking with Kevin Hages, it was recommended that because of the involvement of our Facilities Committee, particularly under the airport, that it would be important for Supervisor McGowan, who we all know about right and early, all weekend long, to help everyone park and coordinate throughout that process. So I apologize if I didn't get to all the questions of Christine Strau. And hopefully that does now address those remaining questions. I believe there were other hands for comment. Supervisor Driscoll.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Earlier this week, in response to the Chairwoman's request, I caught me each of you on what I was looking for in 2021. Certainly, directly or indirectly, COVID is going to impact a lot of the decisions that we've made. It's already been discussed that there is concern, and people who are upset about the formula for distribution of the vaccine. Certainly, we need to get that in a more timely and efficient manner. And I anticipate that that's gonna happen. The downside of that is also that there is, it still remains a number of individuals who are interested in getting the vaccine. And in the spirit of trying to get our, our numbers up, Janelle Jones has said 100%. I think I mentioned it in my letter that I would be satisfied with 90%. Other people are talking about 75 to 80%. Let's shoot for that 100% that our public health director is looking to achieve. It's for the best of all of our citizens, and I think it's responsible, a responsibility of us in our own ways to creatively find ways to help educate and inform residents of our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Driscoll. We appreciate that. I know we're all committed to the largest percent possible. Supervisor Driscoll, I also wanna mention that in terms of your appointments, we have corrected, and I'm not sure you saw that in the amended resolution, but per your request, the potential conflict. So that has been resolved with community action. I believe it's Supervisor McDavid that has since been appointed to fill your shoes under that special congratulations Supervisor McDavid. To that point of a couple other changes that took place, very briefly, the IDA. The IDA is a situation where we work collaboratively now with Chairman Sam Hall over in Washington County. We, of course, have had a lot of discussions this year about the IDA. And as we were making those resolutions last night, Supervisor Wilde had expressed to me he was interested in coming off of the IDA. I thought we had an additional vacancy, but it was a clerical error. Supervisor Simpson had long left the IDA, and so he was nice enough to call me this morning and let me know of that. And of course, so did County Administrator Ryan Moore. It was a late night last night trying to get those rights. So we did correct that. And Supervisor Wilde, we were able to honor your request, have me removed from that. And now we do have a vacant position. I talked to our chairman over in Washington County. Again, it's a joint process. We'll be looking at their appointments next month. And we'll continue to work very hard collaboratively to find a person or, and also with the IDA on those recommendations. So just, that was also amended. I think you saw that in your packets. I think those were the only ones, though. However, I do wanna say, under the announcement section, thank you, all of you, for being so willing to, whether it's a member of a team of the committee, or a chair, or your special appointments. I've asked that you give it three months, and if something really isn't working, then let's talk about it. And I know I do have that ability under the chair's position to go ahead and make some of those switches. But I really appreciate the commitment. If you could give it three months. Supervisor Wilde, and then Supervisor, is it? Oh, it's you up on the screen too. Oh, yeah. Geez, that's, that's crazy. Okay, sorry. I thought you were at the Bills game with your background. Supervisor Wilde.
Madam Chair, thank you. I was trying to hold my public comment, but since you brought it up about the IDA, I don't believe that that truly represents our conversation that we had in private, that I did agree to continue for a few months and settle some things out. So that's, that's not totally true.
I apologize.
So given that side, I believe I have the floor also. There's a couple of things that are going on here that are troubling to me, and it's all about politics. That's not what we're here for. We're here to do the people's business. We can argue about language. We can argue about anything. But what we do is set an example for the rest of our community and the county. And it's important for us to be able to put aside some of these political differences and do our best for our constituents. And passion is a good thing. I've said this many times. Passion is great. Anger does not fall into that realm of being great. So we need to control our anger, but pursue our passions. And hopefully, as we go forward, we can support our new Chairwoman. We can support the group, both do the county's business and do the best we can moving forward. But to be honest, I'm tired of the politics. I'm totally tired of it. Now, my last point was, there's only one football team in this state that plays in our great Empire State. And it's been 25 years that I have been suffering supporting my team, the Buffalo Bills. And all I would like to say is, go Bills.
Supervisor Wilde, thank you. And in light of that passion, and of course, I think we all agree we're sick of the politics, and we really like to just move forward and get to the work that people put us here to do. I am more than happy, and I believe that I would need, and I don't know the procedure, and I'm sure Amanda will help me, I am more than happy to amend that resolution if there was a misunderstanding and make sure that your name and your appointment remains on the IDA to continue certain important work that you have been doing since elected. Amanda, could you tell me that procedure, given my misunderstanding?
Yep, you're gonna need, I'm just trying to find that resolution real quick. I think it's number.
Thank you for your patience. It's important that we listen to all members of our board.
Number 20. So what the board will need to do is go back and make, you've already voted on this. You're gonna make an amendment to, you're gonna make a motion to amend Resolution 20 to change that vacant spot to a red.
Thank you. Supervisor Leggett makes that motion. May I have a second? That is made by Supervisor McGowan. All those in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Thank you. The motion carries, and I'm sure we're all there. And I'm sure we're all very grateful for your continued community service on the board of the IDA. Thank you very much Supervisor Wilde. At this point in time, without any more privilege of the floor, are there announcements?
Go Bills.
Don, are there any announcements?
No, Chairwoman Seber, there's nothing additional on YouTube at this point.
At this point in time, I would very much like to say thank you. On this board, we are all county supervisors, and we represent our constituents as county supervisors. I am so impressed and so encouraged by all of your courage to stand tall and to be Warren County strong. May I please have a motion to adjourn today's meeting? That motion is made by Supervisor Leggett and seconded by Supervisor McGowan. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Happy 2021.